Yeah, not what I expected to hear on Friday. First and foremost, regardless of the races, the playoffs, the waiver, our well wishes with Chase, we'd like to see him get back and be back in that nine car. But I've been in a situation like this where your driver was injured or was sick and it gets horrible. It's horrible. They got one of their plane third duty to fly to Las Vegas. They can finish the field coming off of a second place finish in Park Town. And all you can do is get in there and buckle down and just do the best you can with a very tough situation. Especially when it happens that close to the race podium. There are a lot of people asking about the circumstance, Daniel. And for a driver who makes his living behind the wheel of a race car, why wouldn't he afford the opportunity to go out and then snowboard something that could be dangerous? What is the reaction from the driver room to hear a question like that?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, you never want something that needs to happen, you know? But at the end of the day, we waste almost every single weekend from February to November. And we have no days off, you know, we are going every single day. Monday, Sunday, Saturday, every single day. And it's very important to have distraction, you know, I do a lot of motorbike. And they can be dangerous at times as well. So I feel like it's very important to disconnect from racing a little bit. And every single driver has their own, always their own distraction, their own kind of training. And I mean, it's very, you know, we try to be safe and responsible. But there is always a level of risk with that report.
The next step will be the ruling on the medical waiver, Larry. Yeah, and I talked to NASCAR about that this weekend. They said, yeah, we have received a question from Hendrick Motorsports. They go back, they evaluate all the information. I can't imagine that they will not give it to him. I think back to 2015, Kyle Busch injured in the Xfinity Series race that they tore in February. He actually came back to the All-Star race, but he officially didn't come back to race number 12 at Charlotte Motor Speedway. Won race number 16. But remember, back then, you had to get to the top 30 in points. That is gone away. Chase had against the waiver. He comes back and wins in the regular season. He should be in the playoffs. Most importantly, we want Chase to get well, get healthy. We hope to see you back at the track soon. So Josh Barry gets the opportunity, well, with Chase not driving, to drive that nine car on Sunday afternoon. This is a very difficult circumstance for a driver that's going for the Xfinity Championship. Yes, same situation as a nine team. He gets on an airplane that can fly to Las Vegas. He's thinking, all I'm doing is running Xfinity Series race on Saturday. Me and my family's gonna go back home. And think about it, you're stepping in the most popular drivers' number nine car. You only have two cup starts. You have never raced a next gen car. Unfortunately, this was in the race right here. Gets into turn two. Well, we saw Kyle Busch do it twice. But when I think about a 29th place finish, I know, whoa, that's the other teams ran one, two, three. But again, this situation right here in a race that only had four cautions and in a race that 35 of the drivers of the 36 that started were still out there. He did exactly what he needed to do, run as many laps as possible and be there at the end.
You know, the Cup Series is very difficult. Competition is very difficult. Even when you prepare yourselves, even when you do smooth labor, even when you watch film and you watch so many different things that we do every single week. So when you don't do those things, it should be more difficult. And that was a situation that Josh Barry was in, you know, he didn't know anything. I mean, the car wasn't even fitted for him yet. So, yeah, he was definitely in a tough position. Hopefully, you know, having Northport give him another shot and he can show what he can do.
Yeah, we have no word on who will ride the nine car this weekend at Phoenix and beyond. We'll keep you posted as soon as we find something out. Speaking of which, going to Phoenix on Sunday. We got the coverage out of box three on Eastern side. We look forward to it as kind of our first short track race of the year. You know, officially it is a pile. It's not a short track with that.
Time to call the order. Of the Andover Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Commission. I see on the call Commissioners Larson, Mashkey, Monroe and Fife. Of course, I'm here too, so we got a full board. Alternate Smith not present. Are there any suggested changes or additions to the agenda?
I would like to add a brief discussion of the work taking place at 409 Lake Road. That's lot 22.
Okay, should we add that to the, you want to add that to the agent report?
We can, yep.
Okay, so we got a motion like a second. Commissioner Monroe seconds to add that item to the agenda. That will be then, we'll call it 8B. Just to make sure it's duly noted. Anything else? Okay, and moving on, we have approval of the regular meeting minutes from our previous meeting, Monday, February 6. And again, those were distributed, should be in hand. Give you a second to run through them again and ask if there are any additions or corrections to the minutes as posted. Okay, anybody have anything? Okay, I've got a couple items I noted when I was reviewing them earlier. First of all, in item one. Oh, is that a little static? Okay. There was a, okay. It was once again a public meeting, not a hearing in the call to order. Okay, in the roll call city alternates. Ed Smith is an alternate, not a regular member. In item number nine. Which was the other business commission vacancies. There's a sentence that says George Elliott motioned to move Duncan Fife as a regular member of the I W C C. Sorry, W W C. Two things there. First of all, it was a motion to appoint. And the spelling of Fife should be with a Y rather than an I. Then with an I would be Fife as in Fife and Drum Corps. Okay, let's, you know, was there anything else? Oh, and finally, in the footnote, the motions are not official approved by the I W W C. I think you're mixing your commissions there, Carol. We have our own authority over our minutes and we do not rely on our companion agency.
Okay. Okay, noted. Thank you.
Okay, that's all I had. So if there are no other provisions, corrections, I would ask for a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
In a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, that, and I'll take a quick roll call. Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
Commissioner Mashkey.
Aye.
Commissioner Monroe.
Aye.
Commissioner Fife. And I also, aye, so the motion carries 500. Okay, there's, oh, I see a member of the public, so I will ask for a public comment if there's anything on our agenda.
And, excuse me, George, may I have Hank's, may I have Hank's last name?
Who?
Hank.
Hank, that's Hank Gruner, G R U N E R. Who is with the Conservation Commission.
Thank you.
Okay, well, so no public comment. Then next item is old business, the permit application, I W W C 23-01. Given to us previously by Jay Tuttle, the town of Andover Public Works Director. And the permit, the general nature of which is to cover routine activities associated with right-of-way drainage. We had an extensive discussion of this, of course, at the last meeting. However, some revisions from the original application project description were advanced as a result of discussions at the meeting and then subsequently between Agent Wagner and Mr. Tuttle. So with that background, I'll ask, since I see that Agent Wagner is on the call and not Mr. Tuttle, Agent Wagner would direct us to the, to the important changes that were made in the application documentation.
All right, can you hear me all right?
Yep.
I had to switch to my phone for some reason. I wasn't getting any audio on my computer. So, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, um, work with Jay to kind of make it more, a little bit more detailed. Limit the scope of the work, kind of importance with Commissioner Larson's comments. So the big changes were the last two bullet points on the project description, which were, they said repair or replacement of defective drainage structures and/or systems to include catch basins, culverts, end or wing wall, the inlet or outlet, and any drainage pipes in the same location. And we deleted the drainage structures in our system. Culverts, any drainage pipes in the same location. And then we added another bullet point under that that said replacement of culverts or drainage pipes 24 inches or less in diameter that do not contain a water course as defined in section 2.36 of Andover's in the Wetland Regulation. Let's see, what else did we do? I think the other change was in the last paragraph. We added the an individual wetlands permit application will be filed for any public works department projects that do not fall under the scope of this general permit, such as new projects, replacement of culverts containing water courses or culverts greater than 24 inches in diameter or projects that require significant redesign of existing structures or alterations of drainage. So those are the changes in wording.
Okay, any questions or comments from any commissioners here?
I guess I still got a little bit of a concern on the, it's the new fifth bullet down where we're talking about repair or replacement of defective catch basins, I got that. Or end or wing walls at inlets and outlets. And my concern there is, you know, I think the wing wall could be a pretty extensive project in close proximity to a wetlands. The, at least the one that I have in mind is the wing wall where Bizzola Road comes into Lake Road and it's, you're crumbling away. That is gonna, that's a significant project with a huge culvert. I was thinking maybe the, you know, the wing wall on a 24-inch pipe or less. But, you know, a project of that magnitude, I would think, would still warrant, you know, bring in an application to the commission.
Wouldn't that be covered by the size of the culvert and the fact that it carries a water course in this situation? You know, both of those being circumstances that would require a specific application.
I don't know that the culvert needs to be repaired. I think it's just the wing wall that's crumbling and falling apart out there. And that's why when we broke that out, I, I got concerned on that. I don't know if work needs to be done on the culvert itself or whatever. All I, all I know is if we were to go out and, and do whatever to that wing wall, I think that, that warrants a permit regardless of, you know, whether we're gonna work on the culvert or the drainage pipe.
Yeah, I think I take your point. Do you have a suggestion for modifying the language? This is in the, this is in the nature and purpose of project document, right? The one that's titled I W W C 23-01, general permit and over D P W project description.
Yep, I think the same words.
Right.
Same words are in the, in the permit itself too. Yeah. On page two of the permit, they've got the same six bullets that are, are here under this nature of project.
Okay, well, the saline language would be in the, in the actual permit. So again, if you have, do you have a suggestion for how we could modify that language?
Well, I think my recommendation would be to just eliminate the words or end or wing walls at inlets or outlets. That still allows, you know, to repair or replacement of defective catch basins without anything here, which is, you know, what I thought was a reasonable approach. You know, I don't think we've, I don't think we've overtaxed the public works department by, you know, having them come to the commission too often.
It's true, there haven't been that many applications before the commission in the past few years. And there were probably none at all before that, given the way things used to work. So, yeah, if you feel that it would be not too restrictive. You know, I don't know where, what, how much wing wall or how much end wall repair would. Certainly, if they're gonna go after culvert, you know, less than 24 inches, they're almost invariably going to be dealing with some ancillary structure, right? And I think that, you know, we have to give them some reasonable leeway to, to get, to get the kind of work done. If you're talking about catch basins and so forth, you know, other essentially masonry type structures, whether they're stacked stone or concrete. You know, it's hard to see where they could go. Well, you know, would those occur only in larger projects?
I mean, are we trying to deal with the regular maintenance portion of it? So that doesn't sound like that's a regular maintenance.
Well, that's, that's exactly the question I'm asking. And I don't know if it's, if some of the kinds of, you know, if activities involving headwalls and wingwalls would be part of their routine maintenance. You know, going into a drainage system and trying to correct problem with flow or deterioration of the structure with age and salt and all of those things. Agent Wagner, do you have any sense of where there might be a cutoff? Again, I don't want to just completely exclude things that we don't need to exclude.
Yeah, I was trying to think of if we could reword it to, you know, replacement of culverts or drainage pipe 24 inches or less, if you could add the associated catch basins or end or wing walls. Cause you know, if you, if you could limit it to, or you could just leave that out. I mean, not sure if those small drainage pipes have wing walls. I'm just trying to think of an example of one that I've seen.
Yeah, I don't know the engineering.
Those are probably the larger culverts anyway, which wouldn't fall under this, the ones that had water courses in them.
And again, the purpose of having, you know, a two or three-year review thing is if we find out that we, you know, missed the boat somewhere on this thing and there are a bunch of wing walls on the smaller pipes, you know, we can, we can fix it. I, the only example that I'm aware of is the one at Bizzola Road and it's a huge wing wall.
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean, if you could, if you wanted to strike that out and then see how it went, I mean, I'm sure you probably could, or, you know. Cause I mean, the replacement of culvert or drainage pipe 24 inches or less, that bottom statement would probably cover the stuff that's associated with those things. And then, you know, then there wouldn't be any confusion, I guess.
That was my thinking.
Yeah. So you could, and then the bullet above that could just say repair or replacement of effective catch basin. And then that would be it. Would that make sense?
I would agree with that.
Okay.
Okay, I think in order to get our ducks in a row here, we should have a motion on the floor to approve the permanent application because then the modifications that we're making can be entered as amendments to the motion, okay?
The only question I had was, there was some talk on the last meeting about the length of time. You know, two to three years versus the five years. It looks like it's written for five.
We'll address that in just a moment, Jen.
Okay.
That's, that's definitely gonna come up.
Okay.
First, I'd like to have a motion to approve the application because then we can proceed to amend the application and have it on the record as a, you know, formal process.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for permit I W W C 23-01.
Okay, can I get a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, so moving seconded. Now we can, again, as a, as a motion, Commissioner Larson, if you would, you know, again, move to amend the permit and application to delete references to end or wing walls.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the application to under the typical maintenance activities that would be covered under this permit on the fifth bullet down to remove the words or end or wing walls at inlets slash or outlets.
And that will also apply to the, well, we've got the document, it's a general permit and over D P W permit draft. And the revision that we're looking at is from March, I'm sorry, February 9. So we're looking to, again, eliminate the language from that as well, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we got the motion to amend any other, motion second. Do we have any discussion on that point? And we've already talked about it, so if there's any further discussion. Okay, if not, I'll call for a vote on the amendment, Commissioner Larson.
Well, did you want to address any of the other, any of the items or just?
One amendment at a time.
Okay.
Okay, that way we can really keep a clear record of where we're going.
Okay, I got you.
So, Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
Commissioner Mashkey.
Aye.
Commissioner Monroe.
Aye.
Commissioner Fife. And I also vote aye. So the motion to amend carries 500. Moving on, there were other things to consider. One Commissioner Mash just brought up, the duration of the permit. That is currently blank, so we have to fill in the blank. And I would like that in a form of, well, we can have some discussion first, but we'll need a motion to set the duration of the permit to add to the, add to the record. I think there was general consensus the last meeting that five years might be a bit much. I'll throw out a number that I think would be reasonable and that would be three.
I'll make a motion to amend the permit to be valid for three years.
Okay. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so moving second. I think it's a reasonable length of time because, you know, again, as we pointed out, we haven't had a lot of applications from the Department of Public Works for these kinds of activities. So I think, you know, we have to have a long enough period of time to see how it plays out. And again, as Commissioner Larson pointed out, we may find that there are routine activities that we have excluded from the permits or there may be activities that are perhaps a little more than we had anticipated. So we have motion second for three years. Any other comments? So again, I'll take a roll call on that, Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
Commissioner Mashkey.
Aye.
Commissioner Monroe.
Aye.
And Commissioner Fife. And I also vote aye, so the motion carries 500. So the permanent duration will be three years. Now, do we have any further discussion, suggestions for amendments or alterations on the main motion, which is to approve the permit?
I have one other comment.
Go ahead.
And that, you know, we have attached to the permit the standard conditions of approval. And
Correct.
I know some of, some of those conditions. I know some of some of those conditions, I'm not sure. If they'd approve, if they'd be valid or not, maybe it's not the biggest deal in the world. But when I looked at item six. This approval is for the activity within the regulated area surrounding a wetland or water course is indicated on the following map. And I felt that. If we could comply with the all the rest of them, I don't know that we could comply with that one.
Not since it's a permit for any area of drainage in town, so it would have to be the map of the town. And its wetlands and drainage system, which we don't have. So.
So to make it technically correct, I would recommend that we eliminate standard condition number six.
Okay, then the formal motion.
I'll make a motion that we eliminate. Standard condition number six. From permit I W W C twenty three dash zero one.
Okay, in a second.
I'll second.
Okay, so we got a motion in a second to eliminate that particular. Item six on our standard conditions. Any discussion? Seeing none, ask for the vote, Commissioner Larson.
Hi.
Commissioner Mashkey.
Hi.
Commissioner Monroe.
Hi.
And Commissioner Fife. I also vote aye, so the motion carries. Zero zero. I did have one question, comment in the. Let's see, I've got to find that on there.
Sorry.
Okay. The permit. And the, well, at least the. Yeah, the project description portion talks about. Brush removal in swales, ditches and watercourses in and around drainage culverts. Where normal flow has been obstructed by overgrown vegetation. My comment there would be, do we want to set any limit? On the distance. You know, from the drainage feature. You know, say, I'm thinking back, for example, on the. Shoddy Mill Road where. They obviously had to go off road to clear drainage swales. That were feeding into a culvert system. And, you know, there are, of course, the there are bounds to how far they can go within the right of way. Per se, and Mr. Tuttle described. You know, consulting with landowners, you know, budding landowners. Landowners and, you know, securing consent if he felt he needed to go further. Than the right of way to get the work done. Again, I'm just throwing this out. I don't have any particular. Thoughts about how far or what what boundaries might be. Appropriate if they're in fact needed at all, so. Just, you know, getting asking for comment, does that seem like a reasonable restriction to to place on the? Road crew's activities.
Well, I I had read that, you know, thinking that. If the removing. Brush. From where normal flow has been obstructed. It can't be very far from where the normal flow goes. We're not talking about. In in a flood situation or something. I I thought Jay was just talking about. You know, removing it. From where it accumulates. In in his, you know, water flow paths. So I was okay with that. The way it was written.
Okay, I'm, is this it? He's tossing out an idea. Any other comments on that? No, I haven't made a motion, so we don't really have to act on that comment. If there are any other comments.
I I have one, Jerry Elliott. I I would think that, like, say if there was a tree down. Like, you know, even if it's a hundred yards away, if it's there's a tree down right in the middle of your culvert that's feeding your. Your drainage system, you would think that you just want to get it out of there as fast as you can. That's what I would, is that what you're asking? Those kind of things, like a tree down?
Again, if they're, it's. It's hard to see how, again, you're you're right, a tree fall, it falls in the drainage swale or. In the. I'm thinking more of if it came into a water course. That's fed, you know, coming down to a drainage feature. Again, thinking about the Shoddy Mill Road project, there is a definite water, it was a seasonal water course. That. Required some work and how we came to note it. But again, accumulation of brush, tree fall, anything like that, yeah, in the immediate vicinity of the. Drainage feature, yeah, that makes sense. But if it if it's a water course. Specifically, I wonder if we want to have a little. Restriction. On that. Again, whether it's a seasonal water course or a continuous water course. Yeah, if there's if there's brush fall on the culvert crossing on, say, Stoudbrooke Road. I mean, Stoudbrooke Creek at Townsend, something like that, we would expect the. Road crew to be able to clear there, but if it's a hundred feet upstream. Yeah, it's gonna alter the water course flow, but. Do we want them? Just charging off into the brush to do that? I guess this is one of those things where maybe we should just let it play out. And see if. You know, the three years' time will be soon enough to decide if any adjustments are needed.
Right.
Okay. Okay, other than that, I don't have any other comments. Does anyone else? Can, for last call for comments, suspected, suggested revisions and so forth? So we can return to a vote on the main motion to approve the permit. With the modifications and the timeline specified. Commissioner Larson.
Are you looking for a vote or a motion?
A vote.
A vote. I.
Okay, Commissioner Mashkey.
Hi.
Commissioner Monroe.
Hi.
And Commissioner Fife. I also vote aye, so the motion carries five zero zero and the permit will be issued. Commissioner, or Agent Wagner, I expect you'll be in touch with. Mr. Tuttle and work out to, you know, point out the the details. And of course be in contact with him. Time progresses and work under this general permit actually gets undertaken. Okay, moving on, we don't have any new business, no new applications to consider. And now for agenda item eight, the agent report, including the additional. Comments requested by Commissioner Larson, so Agent Wagner.
I didn't hear the first part, my audio wasn't working, but I'm assuming Commissioner Larson wanted to hear about. Four oh nine Lake Road. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'll do that, have that at the end. See, I I've been trying to get in touch with the owner of Scott's Tree Farm about cleaning up that. Tree debris in the pond. I've sent, I got some notes here. Let's see, I visited, talked to him, updated you guys about that. That was back in October. In January, I mailed him a letter. Didn't hear back. In February, I called him, I didn't hear anything. So towards the end of the month, I. Found another email address, emailed him, finally got a response from him saying that he's, all his employees are laid off in the winter. And that he would work on the cleanup when he got back for the season, so once he got some employees back, which I think. At this point, because we're getting into springtime. It would probably be best to do it in. July or August, which is what I told him. So, yeah, I've been basically documenting everything. I've got photos, so. You know, my. Thought is to. Push him this summer, and if nothing happens, then I got everything kind of set up for, you know, taking more action. On that, just try and get some some of it cleaned up. And then. So I got another one, one thirty one Route Six, Connecticut Meditation Center. I remember driving by and seeing the. Big statue and and an enclosure that was built there, it's. Within a hundred feet of a brook, so I sent them a an email that they needed to apply for an agent approved permit. For working up in Review Area. They responded quickly, saying that they were gonna work on an application and get it into me. I don't have it yet, that was last week. I got a pending permit application for ground mounted solar panels in the Upland Review Area at one eighty seven Lake Road. Still waiting for a bunch of information on that. The guy is, the homeowner's working on it himself, he's in Florida. He's kind of not in a big rush, so he hasn't. You know, I'll post that on the website once I get everything in. He he filled it out on permit link, but it had hardly any information, so. We're working on that, getting a more complete application. I got another one last week that's probably coming in, that's one fifteen Lakeside Drive, is a. Wall repair in Upland Review Area. It's, I think it's about sixty feet from the lake. So they got a plan in, they're they're working on getting their permit link application in. I'll get that up on the website once I get everything for that. And then, four oh nine Lake Road, they started clearing. That lot on Friday. They made quite a mess. Commissioner Larson's emailed me about it and. Public Works also asked me. If I knew about it, so I checked that this afternoon, took a few pictures. Yeah, they went in, they kind of sticking to the. Limits of clearing. As far as going across the wetland, but they don't have a. Tracking pad, they don't have any erosion control in yet. So I called the builder. He wanted me to give him to the end of the week to get it taken care of. So. Thought is to see what, see what happens, see if he can clean it up. He said he got to had to get the logs out of the way, so I could put the tracking pad in and then start working on. Getting the silk fence and getting the wetlands crossing built. It's kind of a flat area, so I don't know if the erosion risk is is super high right now, but it is, it is quite a mess if you drive by it. And that's, that's what I got for the report, so any questions on that?
Well, did, were were you informed, Joe, that two days prior to the start of the work is our permit required?
Yeah, I saw that, that's some. They didn't, no, they didn't inform me. They were, I mean, they, he was in here doing the building permit, so I kind of knew it was gonna start soon, but. I didn't get a call anyway. So, yeah, there were.
Yeah.
A few, a few things in the order of the permit and then the conditions that we had and that haven't really been followed so far. So that's kind of what I what I let him know when I called him today.
Because I know when we approved this, you know, and we were talking about. Starting to work. During the dry summer months. Now, I couldn't find, you know, I I guess maybe that's bad on us that we didn't. Specify anything in the restrictions. I can't find where. Violate anything there.
I don't think that made it into the approval, because I remember he added all his conditions onto the plan. I don't remember seeing that.
Yeah, and, but we certainly, we talked about it and the expectation was that. It would be done. Now, I know when I went by Friday, they had a. A big wood chipper, you know, and it was stuck in the mud there. They couldn't get it out. And.
Yeah, they picked a terrible time to start, I think.
And and so my. I went back and looked at what the permit did say and and. I I would have thought that if they'd have come and and had a discussion with you two days before they started, we could have alleviated. A lot of that stuff, and I I don't know if it's a good story that, you know, they can't get the tracking pad in there now. I think they can, you know, they got the logs off to the side, certainly. You know, they're getting all the heavy equipment, you know, through there into the back and. That's what I was expecting to be, you know, put down first is that, and I know, you know. We we don't want to fill the wetland with with riprap, but. We we don't want all the mud going out onto the road and get washed away and all that kind of stuff, so I I was kind of expecting. That to be step two. Step one is they talk to you, step two, they put in the tracking pad. And not make the big mess that they did there and.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's, I know Jay drove, I think he drove by there today and. Jim Howes, he was gonna give him a call to to try and push him on the tracking pen. At least get that in to protect the road and stuff, that's, I mean, that's not really a wetlands issue protecting the road, but still, it's part of the plan. And.
Yep.
Trying to do it in order is is kind of important, it kind of gives you. An idea how things are gonna go, you know?
And and I remember. When we approved that permit. You know, that ridiculous Larson fella made a big point about the fact. That we make these plans and then the people who execute them. Never even look at them. They just go out and do whatever it is they think they want to do. And everybody said, no, that's not gonna happen here. And. It seems to me that that's exactly what happened here.
Yes, it's frustrating.
Have any much mechanism. To. Enforce those provisions like, especially the notification provisions. You know, it's, it's all well that. Agent Wagner has a general sense that they're gonna be starting, but that's not the same as being notified. We're gonna be starting. In a couple of days.
Well, that gives Joe the opportunity to ask the questions. Like he can go take a look at it and see, oh, where's the tracking pad?
Yeah, meet 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 out there, walk the site.
Yep.
Yeah, those kind of things are are helpful to do, make sure everybody's on the same page.
Okay, oh, I just. As you know, I walk by there just about every day and. Said, nope, that wasn't what I had in mind when we approved the permit.
Yeah, I was kind of. Pushing him to get it done. I mean, I I don't wanna, it it annoys me too, because he put a lot of time and effort into this stuff and then people just. Do whatever they want, so if nothing's done at the end of the week. I don't know, I might have to take more action.
Often fall short of what you would want to consider an enforcement action.
We could, I mean, in the future, there's there's. I mean, we could do some kind of bond with those type of things. You know, you can't do that with this permit, but maybe that's something to consider in the future. If you had, I'd take a little cash deposit from them that, you know, hold on to it to make sure everything, the conditions are followed. That's something to consider, future project.
Might help uh their memory of and attention. Good point.
Absolutely. There should be some recourse.
Okay, that's all, that's all I wanted, uh, you know, I just wanted to make sure that we all had similar expectations of that we ought to follow the, the guidance that we, you know, work hard to come up with.
Point well taken. Uh any other uh comments on the agent report? Uh I hadn't realized that Connecticut Meditation Center was in Andover. And we certainly wouldn't want that gilt Buddha to be left uncovered. I hope that they do get their permit taken care of. Uh so, uh, let's see now, um next, other business, really just some announcements. Remember, commission vacancies are perennial. Uh we've finally have five commissioners. We still need alternate, uh especially since um, well, uh Ed Smith has been listed as an alternate, more or less pro forma, since he was willing to attend meetings if we couldn't get a quorum otherwise. But uh his, uh, you know, hasn't attended otherwise. And I think that we could stand to have a, an alternate who actually uh attended meetings. That's the point of being an alternate. And also, oh, along those same lines, um I uh I will probably not continue on the uh commission at the end of my current term. And you may have noticed that the website, the end of website, uh lists commission vacancies now as uh or commission terms as expiring in November of twenty twenty-three. Uh contrary to my expectation based on the charter, which says that our terms run from July one, twenty twenty-one to June thirty of twenty twenty-three, whereupon, of course, we may be reappointed. Now, I understand that for elected commissions, uh such as planning and zoning, the uh new election cycle having um uh municipal elections in November rather than May, that uh would require a reset for the terms for elected commissions, but we are an appointed commission. So I'm not sure how that's all going to play out. I I inquired, uh Carol Lee is out of the office and so I'm going to check back um in a week or so and see if I can find out more about that. Um but as I say, as far as I'm concerned right now, the charter uh rules and our bylaws uh are geared toward an appointment from uh July one through June thirty. So uh it remains to be seen whether your terms will uh continue uh through November. Oh, I trust that everyone has been informed of the need for training, mandated training on sexual harassment. Uh it was circulated widely. Um and I hope everybody will comply. I uh sat through the State of Connecticut uh C H R O uh training. I found a pro tip here. If you haven't done the training yet, you can read faster than they can talk. So if you turn YouTube sound off and turn the uh speed up, playback speed to two X, you can zip through in half the time.
That violates the rules, George. It has to take at least two hours.
They set a two-hour training session, right? And, you know, if you look at the timelines on those videos, it is two hours. Uh well, um, yeah, this, there are advantages to Zoom training as opposed to having to sit in the room, you know? Uh, okay, uh, that's all on that. Again, as you say, I'll I'll continue to make inquiries about the um terms of office and whether or not you can expect to uh be uh reenlisted in July or November. Any other uh general items? For the commission? Okay, seeing none. Uh our next regular meeting will be on Monday, April third, same time, same place, virtually. And with that, I can ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And I will second it.
Okay, that's a non debatable motion, so um signify by saying aye, aye.
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 Motion unanimous. And we can now stand adjourned. Thank you all for uh participating. I'm glad this was a nice short meeting and uh hopefully, although the commission will have some uh work to do in subsequent months, maybe when construction activities start picking up. So, uh, look forward to seeing you in April. And until then, uh keep well.
Bye, everyone. Bye, everybody.
Have a good night.